Hello and welcome to the Monday, November 14th, regular meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on November 10th, 2022 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. Mr. Eckert, could we take a roll?
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd? Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Here.
Ms. Nurse? Mr. Oliver? Mr. Rue? Ms. Trheo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here. We have a quorum. And Cindy here?
Here.
All right, fantastic. All right, motion to move into executive session. Where is the Open Public Meetings Act? Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975 provide that a public body may exclude the public from a portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in section 7b of the act resolved by the Board of Education, the Township of Hillsborough, and the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are three student matters, a personnel matter, and an investigation update. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in exec. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, November 14th, 2022, regular meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. We are back from executive session, and Mr. Eckert, if we could take a roll?
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd? Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Mr. Rue?
Here.
Ms. Trheo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here. We have a quorum. All right, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice alone.
All right, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed. And we will move, we have no committee reports. Board president's report, actually I have nothing today to report.
Okay.
And we will move on to the interim superintendent's reports.
We do, but why don't we have the chorus sing for us before we get into the board business?
All right.
Thank you very much. That was beautiful. All right. Well, good evening. This evening, I'd like to share some of our fall athletic team's accomplishments. Hillsborough Middle School's boys soccer and field hockey teams were named Central Jersey Junior Champions. The Hillsborough High School Girls' Cross Country Team was named Champions of the Skyline Conference Delaware Division and the overall Skyline Conference and Somerset County Champions. The Hillsborough High School Girls' Volleyball Team was named Somerset County Champions, and the Hillsborough High School Field Hockey Team was named North Jersey Group Four State Sectional Championship. Congratulations to the athletes and the coaches. Just a few calendar reminders. Students in grades K through four will have half-days on November 18th, 21st, and 22nd for conferences. Be sure you reach out to your child's principal if you have any questions on the conferences. All students and staff will have a half-day on November 23rd, and schools are closed for Thanksgiving recess on November 24th and 25th. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Whether you're traveling to family or friends or staying close to home, it's a great opportunity to take a moment to reflect on what you're most grateful for. Be safe.
All right, thank you very much. I will now move on to the approval of minutes. So I'd like, before the board, motion to approve executive session minutes 10:10:22. Motion to approve public meeting minutes 10:10:22. 9.3, motion to approve executive session minutes 10:17:22. 9.4, motion to approve public meeting minutes 10:17:22. 9.5, motion to approve executive session minutes 11:11:22. 9.6, motion to approve public meeting minutes 11:11:22. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we will now move to comments from the public board. Public input on the action agenda and the 2023-2024 budget. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time. The meeting will be open for public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment about items listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaws 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address and what item on the agenda you are speaking to. There is a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board, president, or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Is there anyone that has any comment on the action agenda or budget? Please state your name and address.
Good evening. Good evening, Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association. I'd like to comment on the prospective budget at this time. You know, repeatedly throughout the years, we've spoken about class sizes. We've all acknowledged the fact that there are teacher shortages and that we're still trying to recover from the 56 jobs that were cut many years ago. Acknowledging all of that, we still have to confront the reality that our class sizes are continuing to increase to levels that are becoming untenable. It's putting an incredible strain on the staff, especially with these shortages, and it's creating academic inequities for some of the students. And just in a very general sense, like I'm a math teacher, so I will give you some math. If we have 27 students in a third or fourth grade classroom, which is what we're currently trending towards, if not already at, and each of those students required five minutes of assistance with writing, you know, review for a writing task, or five minutes of one-to-one instruction for literacy, reading, writing, math, whatever it may be, that would be two and a half hours almost, would be 2.25 hours, just to provide those students with five minutes of attention for that. And that's coming out of roughly, you know, a six and a half, seven-hour day. So when you put that into the context of a class and that you're given perhaps 40 minutes for literacy, maybe 40 to 80 minutes for math, it becomes unrealistic for us to meet the needs of all the students under those conditions. So as the board considers the budget, and admittedly considers a budget under very difficult circumstances, and I hope we can continue collaboratively working to address some of those funding issues that we've successfully navigated, I just want to keep this present in your mind and give that context to you as you think about it. It's not as easy as just a number. We have to think about what does that number translate to in terms of the minutes in the day, and are we doing a disservice to the students by ignoring that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments on the action agenda or the budget? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the action agenda. And just for information, we have seven board members in attendance instead of nine, so majority would be four instead of five on voting. All right?
Okay. In education, 11.1, motion to approve professional travel-related expenses. 11.2, motion to affirm the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determination. 11.3, motion to approve field trip destinations. 11.4, motion to approve overnight trips. 11.5, motion to accept safety grant funds. 11.6, motion to approve staff for peer-to-peer mentoring. 11.7, motion to approve 2023 summer enrichment program and add-on clubs administrative staff.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion by the board on this agenda? All right, seeing none, Mr. Eckert, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes.
Under human resources, I'd like you to consider 12.1, motion to approve retirements and resignations. 12.2, motion to rescind co-curricular contract. 12.3, motion to approve contact contract change. 12.4, motion to approve revised co-curricular advisor stipend. 12.5, motion to approve revised transportation drivers' hours. 12.6, motion to approve revised leave of absence. 12.7, approved leave of absences. 12.8, motion to approve appointments. 12.9, motion to approve buddy. 12.10, motion to approve student educational specialist. 12.11, motion to approve extra coverage. 12.12, motion to approve seventh-period coverage. 12.13, motion to approve winter sports coaches. 12.14, motion to approve 2022 summer athletic camps.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes. Operations?
I'd like to present for consideration operations. 13.1, motion to approve monthly financials. 13.2, motion to approve line item transfers. 13.3, motion to approve financial status. 13.4, motion to award contract for online tutoring services. 13.5, motion to approve transportation contract addendums with Frank Valcheck Incorporated for the 2022-2023 school year. 13.6, motion to approve parent transportation agreement. 13.7, to accept donations. 13.8, motion to approve parent transportation contract. 13.9, motion to dispose or sell obsolete equipment. 13.10, motion to approve changes in added district placements. 13.11, motion to approve added district placements.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, all in, sorry, we get a roll.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning-Beater?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Ms. Trheo?
Yes.
And Mr. Mariney?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we'll now move on to the second public comment period. Members welcome in from the public. During the board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaws 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Any comments?
Jane Stats, 101 Devonshire Court, Millsboro. My pronouns are she/her. Recently, I was witness to two events in which people made some statements that were denigrating marginalized communities. And these statements were made to people of all ages, including children. The people who made these statements were in leadership roles. They were, they're highly respected, including, I highly respect them as well, which made it disappointing and a little scary. Which is why I'm really proud that our district has curriculum policies and practices that serve all of our students, most of which who are technically children. Of course, we have students that are 18 or older, but we're talking about children We have aides, teachers, administrators, all school employees, all district employees aim to care for, protect, advocate for, and celebrate every student. Now, the people who made these statements are good, kind-hearted people. So my intention is not to demonize anyone. Hopefully, we can eventually engage in some authentic conversations where we will truly listen to one another, including myself, listen to people who, with whom I disagree, so that we can engage in coming up with actions to better serve all of our students in our schools and in the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Samuel Malone, 2348 Millstone River Road, Hillsboro. Hi, my name is Samuel Malone, and I have been a Hillsboro resident my whole life. From age eight, I have played baseball for the Hillsboro Baseball League's rec and travel teams. This fall was my last season for the team before high school. I am a homeschooled freshman and complete my education outside of the school. I would like to be permitted to try out for the high school team this spring and continue playing with the team I have played with since I was eight. I know that most schools that Hillsboro competes with allow homeschoolers to participate on their teams, and I do not think that I should be excluded in Hillsboro only because of the location I received my education. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Hello. Oh my goodness. My name is Linda Malone, and I live at 2348 Millstone River Road. Actually, I've lived there for just about 16 years. I know our correspondence was noted as received, and I hope that the board and the administration took the time to read and consider it in its entirety. I have copies here if anyone is interested in reading it. I'm sure it goes without saying, but as Hillsboro residents, we are equal taxpayers, and we are members of this community. The school board, as a willful member of the New Jersey State Interscholastic Athletic Association, or the NJSAA, chose to adopt their constitution, bylaws, rules, and regulations as Hillsboro's board policy. And therefore, to be eligible for participation in the athletic program, high school students must meet all of the eligibility requirements of the NJSAA. Samuel meets all of the requirements except for one. You, as the Hillsboro Board of Education, need to approve him and not exclude children who are homeschooled. In 2011, the NJSAA stated homeschool students may participate in school programs. There are no negative aspects of including all children, and the positive aspects are unlimited. Children benefit greatly from these opportunities and should be given them throughout their growth. For 11 years, high schools that surround our community and compete with Hillsboro in athletics revised their policies to include homeschool students. Velvedere High School, Bernard's High School, Bound Brook High School, Delaware Valley Regional High School, Franklin High School, Hunterton Central Regional High School, Manville High School, North Hunterton High School, Phillipsburg High School, South Hunterton Regional High School, Voorhees High School, and Warren Hills Regional High School all made this change, as well as countless others in the state of New Jersey, to include all students of their districts regardless of students being homeschooled or enrolled in the school. How is it that they can make that accommodation to include all students of their district, yet Hillsboro cannot? We are aware that this has been brought to the board in the past. However, we do not understand why the policy has not changed. In 11 years, this policy has not considered the voice of their homeschooled students. We want to become familiar with and involved in the discussion and the reasoning behind why Hillsboro has not been able to make this happen or hasn't wanted to make it happen. What is the hesitation? How do we know what the debate is if we're not given the information as to what the board feels is ineligible about our child? Why not take the opportunity to enrich the lives of a student in any way that you can? Any chance that you have? Extracurricular activities and athletics enrich children's lives. I urge the board to discuss all of the information and carry out the due diligence that this matter deserves. We ask that you give Samuel the same opportunity and consideration that you give every other student of our community, and be true to inclusiveness of diversity, and we ask that you revisit this policy and consider that change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
My name is John Malone, 2348 Millstone River Road. Good evening, and thank you in advance for listening to my opinion imposing the policy of not allowing homeschool children to participate in extracurricular activities. Tonight, I'm asking for your help in understanding the concerns with allowing full participation. I believe that there are concerns regarding monitoring a student's grades and attendance. I find that in this day and age, when we have emails, online chats, Zoom meetings, technology that can track how many steps I take in a day, what I might order from Amazon next week, and that can even track up to the second my mother-in-law's travels from across the country to New Jersey to my front doorstep, not to mention the resources used to monitor all the students currently enrolled in Hillsboro High School. I also need help understanding who benefits from not allowing homeschool participation. I ask you, how many students, or residents of Hillsboro for that matter, have been told, and I quote, "This opportunity is not for you"? I know and believe that we still live in the land of opportunity. My hope tonight is that you see the human side of this issue. Samuel has been a lifelong resident of Hillsboro. A student has been taught to follow his passions and to take every opportunity to advance them. Samuel attended his classes today, like he does every Monday. But the lesson today, but the lesson for today is here tonight, that he has a voice and an opinion. It's a lesson in human nature. Will he witness compassion, empathy, and kindness? Will he be strong, persistent, and unwavering in his quest? That even when the statistics are not in your favor, you still step into the batter's box and take your best swing. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Stefania Lockwood, Millstone River Road. I'm trying not to be negative, and I know I come across as negative a lot, so I'm trying really hard to word this in a way that emphasizes that I'm, I am looking for the positive aspects of growth in what I'm addressing. It is customary, I think, to say that most superintendents have their doctoral degrees, that they are EdD in most cases, some PhD. While I understand the board had a very thorough process and made a decision that is wildly popular, congratulations. That's a hard thing to sell in Hillsboro, anything that's widely popular relating to the school, so good job. Seriously, I mean that. I hope that the board, if the mechanism doesn't already exist for a superintendent, a seated, working superintendent, who might be interested in pursuing further studies Basically, what I'm saying is I hope that if Mr. Volpe decides that he wants to become Dr. Volpe, that the board will support him in that, both in the time allowances that are required and in tuition remission and whatever else. Because I think it says a lot for the district to have the ultimate supervisor have the utmost of training. It's weird to me to have principals who are doctor and a superintendent who isn't. So I hope that if that is something that is important to Mr. Volpe, that the board will support that to him. And Mr. Volpe, if you're listening, I do hope that it's something you would consider because I think it, I think it does bring something to the experience that you have, which is a little bit different than what is typical. And to have some of that other grounding in some of what your other colleagues might have, I think would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and we'll move to board comment. Mr. Gillette?
Yes. So regarding the homeschool student participation, we did receive a briefing by, in his email report to us from the superintendent late last week, so I appreciate that. He did note that the last time we had an attorney opinion about this was so long ago, I wasn't even on the board, that's how long ago it was. It was December 2006. A lot has changed in that time. I actually would like to revisit it. I would like to see what those other school districts, what their policy looks like that allows them to do this. I mean, I don't think we can continue to, to say we're not going to have a policy until we've more recently examined what in the other districts' policies permits them with assurance to allow this. And we can still reject it, but I think it's time for another examination. I think it's time for another examination, and maybe we can do it before the next six weeks, I don't know, just to start to take a look at it. So, because I'd like to have that discussion, maybe in whatever committee. So that's all I have on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Hill, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I just have a report from the Municipal Alliance, which met on Friday, November 4th, and just wanted to highlight that the Alliance is sponsoring The Upstanders, which is a film by IndieFlix, and it's a documentary about resilience and the power of connection to end bullying. It will be livestreamed tomorrow, November 15th, at 7:00 PM, and the notice went out in the community happenings. There's also notices on Facebook, so from what I understand, you don't actually have to register, you have to create an account, and then once 7:00 PM happens tomorrow, the film will be open for one week, and you could, anybody can watch it at that time for free. Secondly, I wanted to highlight the, this year's Red Ribbon poster contest with the theme of "Celebrate Life, Live Drug-Free," and the deadline is November 30th, and I wanted to let folks know that there are five categories of prizes, and including adults. And we don't get very many posters from adults, and there are prizes, so that's a hint. All right, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Ms. Fafana?
I just have some updates. Thank you. I just have some updates pertaining to student groups within the high school. So Spanish Honor Society recently had its induction ceremony and put together several initiatives for Hispanic Heritage Month, which lasted from September 15th to October 15th. In addition to this, several student groups have worked together to spotlight indigenous people, namely the Leni Lenape Tribe, which is local to New Jersey in light of Thanksgiving and the upcoming holiday. Hillsboro Dance Team recently hosted Dancing with the Athlete, which was a fundraiser for the Nationals trip, and I was an emcee. Hillsboro High School Theater also recently had its production of Game of Tiaras, and would appreciate continued outreach and support from our community for the Spring Musical. And lastly, Student Council is holding meetings, monthly meetings with class advisors, Principal DeLolo, and other administrators to discuss relevant issues that pertain to our school community, and these meetings operate very similarly to board meetings, and the involved students look forward to continued communication between them and the board. That's all.
Thank you for your update. Any other board members? All right, seeing none, I will move to adjourn. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Great job.
All right, we'll see you in a couple weeks.